The meeting, because it's seven o'clock and that's what we actually put on the agenda that actually went out this time. So, first thing is additions or deletions to the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or deletions? So, I didn't, we had a, we were gonna talk about business manager and treasurer, but the business manager couldn't make it, so I didn't bother inviting the treasurer. So, we'll put that off to maybe the next meeting. Other than that, if there's nothing else, we'll go to the members of the public. There's a bunch of you, so we can start boy, girl, we can start in the back corner, the front corner, we can start nowhere, anywhere. Anybody? Review the through the minutes, the June 25th, 2018 meeting. So, I believe those, if they're pretty top few minutes, so. Do you have any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, three dimensions. I'll make motion. Rick Plutos, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Eric seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those who pay say aye. Aye. This motion carries. All ayes. Superintendent's report, this isn't your cabinet report, we can't anyway, is it?
No.
Tell me something, though. I read through the, the, the end of the year report for the legislature. So, is it, am I reading it correctly, that in a year and a half, all benefits will be negotiated by a council?
Yeah, it starts with July 1st, 2020. So, yes.
And then, they'll also be negotiating statewide contract?
No, just healthcare.
Only healthcare?
Only healthcare. The timeline starts April of next year and ends December 15th of 2019, to be implemented July 1st, 2020.
Thank you. So, going with superintendent's report. Any other questions, comments? Communications report, does it need any? I don't remember in the back corner. So, we'll, we'll hold off, I don't know if she's coming on, I couldn't remember which meetings. Old business, we're gonna review the request of the district clerk formally applying, having forward. So, Andy submitted paperwork to us, that almost probably is your done now. Does anybody still have that, or do we need to get the copies of that to people? What I'll do is I'll get copies and we'll put that, we'll carry that over to the next meeting. Along, do you think the business manager would be available for the next meeting? Six, training should be gotten started. Dwight, review of building studies and material of information.
Right. So, both the draft, both Dover and Wardsboro were approved by their respective school boards, were sent back to engineers, we got our final reports. For some reason, Wardsboro's being back in two days, and we get to receive showers. So, we're still waiting on some of the orders, so I can't. So, hopefully, we'll have, this week, we'll now hold those final reports to the board this week, and then discuss the next meeting.
But I think we discussed that there was no surprises in Ward.
There weren't surprises in the draft proposals. So, the final proposal will be more detailed in terms of expenses and how to budget, you know, going down there, that's helpful for our budgeting process.
And I don't remember any surprises in Dover, so, anything we all did?
Yeah.
Or so. Did they say it under?
No, nothing, nothing jumped out, we had, you know, five. Anyway, Tammy, did you get the, the official, the big?
It came today.
So, we got the, I don't know if she has the, print card. I'm assuming it's nice and big, or not.
Yes.
By, by.
Lots of pictures.
Lots of pictures.
It's CD as well.
CD as well.
Does that include the schedule for the optimization financials of what they thought the improvements would be in the cost?
Right, so they'll include, they'll include the natural, they'll include several options to have, but.
Do you have the numbers?
We have the numbers, no.
No, that's what we're waiting on.
We're waiting on those, so we haven't seen them.
And it may be up there, it's, I don't know, nobody's been at the school.
They would be, yeah, I haven't received any, still working on it.
So, you can leave it next time.
I'm trying to get it.
Okay. Bill, second, review of superintendent's proposals. So, we, Bill made this presentation at the Dover schools, some of you may have been there. I think there's a couple of people I see that were there. We have put some cards out back, and if you wanna take the card, so if somebody wants to ask a question but doesn't wanna stand up, or the guy over there that's recording us, if you don't wanna be famous, be on TV, you can fill out a card and leave it. What we're gonna do is take the, all the cards from both meetings and just put it on a list, so we have all your questions. We're gonna ask, if we let Bill do his presentation, the boards are, and we had everybody except for Laura at the last meeting, so this will be new to Laura also. We'll let Laura go first to ask any questions, and a little note up to the audience. We just asked that, you know, the questions are addressed to the board, not to Bill, and that, you know, raise your hand and just be all about it. But, it's a pretty good presentation, there's a lot of information out there, and just to, for people to understand, there's no recommendation, the board doesn't, hasn't picked one or the other, and we specifically did that, we wanted it to be presented, and one of the things we've worked really hard to do with you folks is, to, you know, not make any decision unless we, we discuss it in both towns, both in Dover and Wardsboro. I'm a little embarrassed to say that in Dover, I think we had two Dover staff members and one Dover parent, two Dover parents, and then Wardsboro blew us out of the water in Dover, so. How many people from Dover here tonight see where you're at, or so, here? So, so we just, you know, we're, we're gonna go through it, and then what's gonna happen is, is, and I pretty much can guarantee you that whatever you're seeing for proposal tonight, you're not, it's not an A or B, it's just here are some ideas, and then we're gonna have to work on that, so we really do need your input too, so we just hope that you, you let us know what you think. So, without further ado, Mr. Anton, superintendent.
So, I'm Bill Anton, I'm the superintendent, I'll be entering my third year. And I just wanna echo what Rich said, that my team at the central office and I appreciate the professional challenge to design, give some design options based on some very specific criteria that the board is given. So, I'm gonna just kinda take you through a little bit of the history, so the mission of the new River Valley Board is behind you, it is up there, and I just pointed out a couple of things that really were emphasized during the discussions of creating the mission, is that it was a student focus, it was a very, very serious student focus. And the vision, again, up there, up there, and two big themes were opportunities for students and making it equitable, and trying to craft a sustainable system that can deliver on them. So, after creating the mission and the vision, the board did a lot of it, creating what they called their guardrails, which were the things that we had to design the system within. The top four are all bold, because those are really specific, and the bottom three are more general. I'm not gonna read them to you, but you can see that they really respect where we are right now as a culture, and some specific things that are happening in the building, and making sure that we have equitable opportunities for our students. Then, the board took the next step of making sure that each community got to share exactly what it was that made the school or the community special. And, so they asked Wardsboro and Dover to define what honoring the culture meant. And if you can see the top six there on the answers for Wardsboro are the, similar to what you'll see on Dover. And again, it goes back to valuing tradition, kinda the opportunities in programming, making sure that the community's involved, a positive learning environment, the mascot, or they like. And, of course, just kinda some strains that go through, you know, valuing technology, valuing a open and welcome environment through a system, all school celebrations, things of that nature. And then in Dover, same question was asked, and the top six are very similar to what we had in Wardsboro. Care deeply about a rigorous academic program, a positive school climate, keeping the identity and school spirit, making sure that we have a robust offering of specials, and a real connection to the community, along with some very specific things to Dover about the IB program, ski program, even though Wardsboro has a ski program, but that was just mentioned for Dover. So, we had the mission, we had the vision, we had the guardrails, then we had the very specific honoring the culture of each community. And then we got down to our goals. So, these are the five major goals that we designed, the two options that we'll share with you tonight. All students demonstrate proficiency and growth, a budget that, you know, is passed, that is supported, that is valued, that there's a commitment, that families are involved, that communication gets out, and then very specific about getting kids ready for a middle school environment, because we both live in choice towns, to make sure that we have a personalized learning plan, to empower students to know what their learning style is, their learning interests, so they can advocate for themselves when they get into a new environment in seventh grade. So, we took all of that and created a couple of options that we'll share with you tonight. So, option A has minimal change, it would keep things structured very similarly to what they are now. Dover would be pre-K 3 through 6, the Wardsboro campus would be pre-K 4 through grade 6, very similar to what we're doing now. There wouldn't be any major staffing changes, we would develop a school choice policy between the two schools, and we would look at the different areas of offerings and make sure that they were equitable. And that kind of looks like this. So, I, in the design, I'm suggesting that if you have international baccalaureate in one building, you should have international baccalaureate in both. You should increase the professional development learning based on the particular needs of each building, so for example, in Wardsboro, we would still have multi-grade responsibilities for teachers, and I think we should invest in that professional development. It's a, it's a different thing to ask a teacher to teach two grade levels, and I think we should invest in that professional knowledge. And if we have international baccalaureate in both, you need to have professional development. I'd like to have Spanish in Wardsboro, because we have Spanish in Dover. Increasing library media, there's a library media technology in Dover, I'd like to have that in Wardsboro. Wardsboro invests in a nurse, Dover invests mostly in paperwork for a nurse, so I'd like to see those evened out. And then, school choice, making sure that parents have that opportunity. The challenges of that is you're still gonna have structure that's different. In Dover, you'd have single grade classrooms where a teacher is responsible for one grade, and in Wardsboro, they would be responsible for two. The additional investment is basically the things on the left, and making sure that if we're gonna run systems that look a little bit different, we need to invest professionally in the skills necessary, so that our teachers can deliver a high-quality, rigorous academic environment. So, that's option A. Option B. Option B is tremendously more change, particular to Wardsboro. So, the Dover campus would look very similar to what it is now, but the Wardsboro campus would be focused on the early grade, we'd add pre-K 3, you'd operate in three classrooms, thinking about where we currently have pre-K K and 1-2, that that could be a pre-K 3, 4, and kindergarten. And then where we currently have 3, 4, and 5, 6, you could have a 1-2 classroom, and then have a specials classroom, where Spanish could be taught, technology could be taught. You'd keep a full-time principal slash interventionist in Wardsboro and a full-time principal in Dover. So, the major change is that your 3rd through 6th graders would get on a bus and go to Dover to have single grade instruction in a different environment. So, the benefits of that is that all 3rd through 6th graders would get single grade instruction, you would make sure that you keep all your youngest students closer to home, you would increase the specials as you would in option A, to make sure that you're equitable in all those things. You're gonna save a little bit of money, so you can reinvest that into whatever the community and board value. You would make sure that you would have international baccalaureate for both campuses, just like you would in option A. You would add pre-K 3 to Wardsboro, and the estimated savings is about $150,000. Obviously, the biggest challenges is our, you're changing the structure of Wardsboro, and you're asking the Wardsboro 3rd through 6th grade students and parents to be in a different environment. So, just to emphasize what Rich said at the beginning, this is simply a draft plan with a couple of options that are based on the vision, the mission, the guardrails, honoring the culture and the goals, so that a robust discussion can happen between the community and the board. You have something concrete, whether you like certain aspects or don't like certain aspects, you can all point to the same thing, to get to a place where we're creating a new school system for our entire community. So, I appreciate the opportunity to do this, and I'm always available to answer any questions or anything from this point forward.
Okay, open it up. Do you have any questions?
Can I ask a question?
You're answering questions.
Well, is that a, is that a?
You have questions, go ahead. No, we're, yeah.
So, I just wanna clarify, so, when you, did you think about capacity to grow in each building with each plan? And, do you have any comments on that?
In designing the plan, we looked at current capacity, both of the physicality of the buildings. Did not take a deep dive into capacity for five or 10 years down the road.
Option A appears to require new financial capacity.
I wouldn't use the word require, it would be a suggestion to look for equity of opportunities among both campuses.
Do we have to provide equity of opportunities to both campuses?
Well, so, equity is defined by the board.
Okay, and then?
I'll work that out.
And then, in option B?
Yes.
And I wanna say, I really appreciate the high level of all of this, because it really allows a lot of room for discussion, which is great, and fine tuning. With option B, I noted the potential for $150,000 in savings, and was that after thinking about kind of leveling out the specials and the IB?
Yes.
Okay, those are my only questions. Yep? Thank you.
I am, members of the public, yes.
Custer.
So, what I'd just like you to do is if you can just state me my, if you're gonna pick me.
Okay, that's fine. Tenille Cutler, Wardsboro. So, I've spoken with a few people in our community, in Dover, and other communities, and it sounds like IB is looked at more at a college level, and the consensus seems to be pre-K through 6th grade, while it brings some opportunities into the classroom, after 6th grade, it really is more college level. So, if none of the high schools, because I'm under the assumption that there is one high school in southern Vermont that offers it, excuse me, so if it doesn't continue past 6th grade, why are we spending money on it? It's very expensive, and I know that Dover already has it going, but it's gonna be expensive for our teachers to learn it, it's, I just don't understand why we're spending the money on it if it doesn't extend past 6th grade.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I would, perhaps it might be helpful to us, sorry. Joel Titleman, Wardsboro. To add kinda to what we were saying to you, I wonder if it would be helpful for us, Wardsboro vote, to hear, why did Dover decide to do IB in the first place?
Sure.
What, what was worth the extra investment to them for a program that dead-ends after 6th grade?
I agree.
What convinced the town to approve that? Wasn't that long ago, I think, what?
Almost five years, six years, probably. Yeah, I believe the town approved it fourteen. So, what I, I didn't wanna, and, you know, your question too, we wanted to get the questions back, I wasn't really ready to kinda have a discussion, because I wanted the board and then be able to think about all this and then get back to you. I, if you guys want, I can give you a quick overview of why we went to IB. So, what happened is, you know, we in Dover had the highest spending special education in the entire state of Vermont, and, I mean, there's nobody spending more money than us. The state of Vermont sent two people from UVM down to sea, because they thought it had been something in the water. And, one of the things we, we looked at at that time was how do we improve ourselves? How do we get away from that? We had some of the lowest test scores in the state, we spent more money than anybody else, and it just wasn't making a lot of sense. So, the administrator at that time went to a program with, instead of using the resource room model, you know, that the staff would work with the students in the classroom, there was a lot of training, we, pardon, differential training, and we actually looked at doing way with winter sports. There was a 4-1 vote by the board to do a way with winter sports, and you know how well that went over in Dover. You know, we had 120 parents in the, at the next board meeting, because it was not, I think you were actually living in town at the time. So, what we did was, you know, we went and looked at how can we get better, and the administrator at that time made a bunch of suggestions, including all-day kindergarten, preschool, differential learning, I think the staff, instead of going to winter sports, stayed back, and we doubled, maybe even more than doubled our professional development, not money but time. And, things started turning around, we had, you know, it was one or two years, we had no special, had spending at all in town Dover. And, so then, we hired a new administrator, that model was moving us along, we were doing very well, we had some of the higher test scores in the state, and the new administrator said, hey, you know, we can't rest around all the laurels, there's a book out there about, something about mice and cheese, you know, and if mice just get used to eating the cheese in one place, they don't go, and when that cheese runs out, then the mice run out. So, his suggestion was, hey, let's look into this IB program, and to be really honest, it wasn't as universally embraced like the previous plan to do the all-day kindergarten. So, we spent about two year and a half, two years, board members went to different IB schools, we had staff member involved, staff members involved, and we looked into the program, and we felt that there was a lot of pluses for it, because we think, oh, one big thing is, the model for instruction is the same as what the state was moving towards anyways. There seemed to be a lot of pluses to it, the amount of money that we, that we put for, towards it was not that great, it wasn't like it costs us a million dollars, and we felt we could get some real benefit from it. So, we presented it to the voters, the voters approved it, and we've been moving forward ever since. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm Soon, Dover School. After hearing this through the first time and thinking about equity, just something to think about, Dover predominantly moved to single grades this year, due to a glitch in hiring, where you had to combine a 1-2, but IB lends itself to single grades, and having had a 5-6 for, Rich, I don't know how many years, doing it in just 6th grade really expanded the capabilities of my students and myself. So, in thinking about equity, Wardsboro has to combine grades, the IB is more fluent in single grades. And I just wanna add, Phil and I had this conversation years ago, what happens after 6th grade? Because I asked him that, and what he said to me, and I'm really paraphrasing, was, kids will be better learners, and they are. Watching my kids from the last three years move on to 7th and 8th, and getting the feedback from the parents, they are, the intrinsic motivation has changed, the questions they ask have been broader, I've seen a lot of benefits for the kids. Up in Middlebury, their whole school district, K-12, is moving into IB, and so, I think they take that with them, even if it's not an IB program.
I also think, you know, both boards from Dover do have school choice 7 through 12, and that may be something that a parent wants to consider, something at their school somewhere. I don't know where they all be.
Sorry, I just, I don't know if it's a question, I just, I feel like since that was sort of answering my question, it geared another one, which is, I mean, I think it's hard to say that IB is what made them more intrinsic learners, and what are we comparing it to? Like, I, I can appreciate that you like the program, but I don't think that that's a fair, I don't think that's fair to say, because I think there are kids that come from terrible school systems that are amazing learners, they're brilliant, and no matter the school, there's going to be kids that bubble to the top, kids that are in the middle, and the ones that are at the bottom, and regardless, like, some of that comes from home, some of that comes from who they are as people, so, I am reluctant as a parent to say that that is why they're asking those questions.
Thank you.
Dave Squark from Wardsboro. Not exactly a question, but a couple of comments. Bill had stated that equity is defined by the board, so, I mean, it could be a possibility, we could look at it and say, IB works great in Dover, but it may not be what we need to do in Wardsboro, and that wouldn't take any equity away if it's defined by the board. My second comment is, in these guardrails, and I might be using the wrong terminology, but I believe one of the things that is being stressed is keeping the identity of towns and the schools, and I would hope the board looks at it and sees that option B is not keeping much identity in Wardsboro, whereas Dover keeps the same thing, so, just, just a comment.
And I think it's not, and I think it's just gonna be the boards and define what equity is, I mean, you folks could help us with that.
Right. But I mean, I guess my comment is, maybe it doesn't have to be in both schools to still achieve what we're trying to achieve.
Every, both schools aren't, you think, the same color, two decades. No, and again, that's what we've been trying to express with everybody, is neither one of these plans are set in stone, there's, there's not been, Bill didn't say, I like Plan A B better than Plan A, or Plan A better, nobody on the board is expressing a comment. We're taking input from you folks, so that we can do that, and maybe equity isn't that the IB is often in both schools, but maybe we solve that equity issue with the, I forget the policy name, but. School choice. School choice. So, maybe if Lady O in the corner in blue shirt there wants her child to have IB, because she's all of a sudden read about and drank the Kool-Aid, that she can get it without being in Wardsboro, but it's still a secondary school system, and that's something we really appreciate you guys coming out to express to us, so that we know what to do and how to move forward. So, I, I guarantee, I, I can swear on the stat models, that, you know, no decision's been made, we don't know what this is gonna look like yet, nobody does, and that's why we want you folks to speak to us, and I'm glad that we have a great turnout. And I'm glad that we have a great turnout.
Amanda from Ward's Row. School choice is evident for Ward's Row and Dover pre-K through second, but then Ward's Row residents three through six don't actually get school choice. Right?
No, we're talking.
Only if you go with that option.
And then, and then part of the agreement, the articles of agreement, said that the board would, before the opening of the school, come up with a policy. And I can't recite it exactly for you, but we need to consider the town, the child, and the family lives in, siblings, and, you know, what's the, what is the best thing for that child? And that is what allowed movement between buildings. It's, when we say school choice, it really isn't school choice because it's one school system, but it's two different buildings.
So just to clarify, you're not talking about school choice within high school? You're talking about school choice within pre-K through six?
Right, that's the possibility we'll have to come up with.
But that's what you're addressing?
But, no. Let me explain to you, so, here's three things we're talking about. You have universal pre-K choice. You can take your child, if you want to take your child to Burlington, you can take your child to Burlington, we're going to pay for that. Okay? From grade one, kindergarten through six, there will be some type of choice policy that the River Valley School Board will adopt. And it's not, when I say school, it's more building. So the building, there'll be a building choice policy. Okay? We're for Ward's Row and Dover, we require we adopt that. For the River Valleys, which building? And then seven through 12, you send your child wherever you want to send your child. If you want to send to Burlington again, if you want to send to Little Pride School, if you want to send to Leland Gray, you have school choice for that. We have no say over where you send your child.
And we're not looking at a school choice policy tonight? We're looking at a configuration.
Yep. I'm going to just go out fast first, so if you can get some more.
Heather from Ward's Row.
Hang on a second.
I just want Rich to clarify that that school choice of really, of course, elementary school is not going to change for either town of whatever policy, you know, whatever.
No, you have school choice. You've always had it. It's not changing. The only thing that's going to change is how much is going to get paid for tuition to non-public schools? And you just, that has to be voted on every year. So instead of voting on it, Ward's Row and Dover will be the River Valleys vote. I'm sorry, Neil, go ahead.
A couple of questions. We had both proposals April, and maybe it's out there and I haven't seen it, but a breakdown, you mentioned an expense with option A and savings in option B, and how you're coming up with those numbers, whether it's a change in staffing or programs and whatnot.
Why don't we eliminate some of that and we use second one? Because that was discussed in the last meeting.
So in general, in option B, it's two full-time classroom teachers. That's where the savings comes from. And you're still investing about that $70,000 to look for equity. But again, that would go back to whether you would want to invest $10,000 in IB professional development or $5,000 in multi-grade professional development. Those are all just assumptions. But it's basically about a $220,000 difference. $70,000 of additional expense and $150,000 of savings. Is that, but it's, it's position. Two classroom positions. That's where you're going to save your maximum amount of money.
My second question, even while I'm in fact, Sue and Moon had mentioned, is the IB program, if it's primarily a single classroom program in what it's designed to serve, your plan had it on option A, which was to keep the classrooms as multi-grade classes. So my question is, I don't, I'm not familiar. I actually just asked what IB was. But I'm asking the question as to why that would be.
So IB is an instructional framework that can be used in any environment. And I think, not to speak for Sue, but what I think Sue was pointing out is that it's much more focused and easier to obtain if you have one single grade that you're responsible for rather than two. So I understand those inherent barriers that would need to be considered, but I didn't want to rule out in a suggestion presupposing decisions that the community and the board would need to make.
So it wasn't part of the option number of B and C?
Both. It's in both.
It was.
And I apologize, actually to Neil last time, so, I apologize if I, I tried to make it more clear, but I'll make it very clear right now. Yes.
Anybody else?
Mine was just like, it's tied into that. So Dover is the IB from pre-K through sixth grade currently? So theoretically, if we went with terrible option B, then, then our younger kids are still in potentially multi-age classrooms. So there's a challenge there already to bring IB to our younger kids. And then the older ones, it possibly is easier because they're at Dover in single grades. But then we still have that issue of, we have these multi-age classrooms, so we still have to professionally develop, support these teachers. Now IB is more challenging. And, and I'm a little bit confused because in Dover last month, it was dropping two staff members and having two classrooms, but this evening you said a pre-K classroom, a kindergarten classroom, and a one-two classroom. So then we're only dropping one teacher.
You're reducing two teachers from the overall of both campuses. And I'm just talking about the pre-K, K classroom and the one-two classroom?
Yep.
You have a door in between there?
Yep.
So I would, I would explore expanding that into a larger classroom because you have.
Three-year-olds through kindergartners?
Correct. So it'd be one larger classroom, but you have two adults that are in there. So that could be possible.
Okay.
But again, these are all draft suggestions that the community and the board.
And as an early educator, I mean, I know, this is my soapbox, but I just, I feel like we're contradicting ourselves. We're saying, I mean, I personally, this is just my thing. I think we should go, I think option A makes sense. Let's let it go. Let's see what money looks like. Let's, and then if we have to shift due. Because as an early educator, I say, if we're putting three-year-olds through kindergartners, if we're already struggling with third and fourth graders together and fifth and sixth graders together, you put three-year-olds who are barely toilet trained in with kindergartners who are reading and writing, that's a nightmare.
And that is the beauty of the feedback that you're providing.
Hang on a second. Remember too, at the last meeting, you were in one Dover.
I was.
One, somebody from Ward's Row, I don't remember who, one of the teachers said that we were, I was, I kind of was under the impression there was less classrooms. So they said there were more classrooms, so you could do single grades if you had the numbers for the, for those younger grades also to separate that out. And I think the preschool was separated out, right?
So that was a suggestion from Ms. Bills, that if we have four classrooms, couldn't we just set it up in an environment where you have pre-K, you have K, you have a one, you have a two.
And again, remember folks, there's nothing set in stone. So I mean, these are all, these are all possibilities.
Shouldn't be, I don't want to be, misunderstand me as a parent and community member. I can't.
Even though it's two options presented, it's not a new war, you know, so just be aware of that. It's not like it could be.
Sure.
As a board, we can pick the best item for both, or throw out items, or do whatever we want, or we can throw them all out together.
It could be the option C that we haven't even found.
Just so dominoes though, you know, we got to pick one of the others.
Well, I think right next to you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie. I'm from Ward's Row. I'm kind of new to the ballgame and new to Vermont, so I'm going to ask a lot of questions that probably everybody's going to be annoyed by, but I apologize. Number one, I assume that the people that are coming up with these plans have education background, right? So I'm confused that anyone would even suggest to parents and taxpayers that we would put three, four, and five-year-olds in one classroom. That's incredibly shocking to me that that would even be a proposal presented that someone would even think that. That's crazy. Is Spanish a Vermont state requirement for middle school? Because I hear you talking about pushing Spanish, and I'm all for foreign languages, but I'm just wondering if it's a Vermont state requirement and that's why you're pushing it?
It is in high school. It is an option in middle school. It's not in elementary.
Okay, so it's currently offered in Dover because of the IB program? Or separate from? Oh, so it's separate from?
We actually offered, we offered in language one for, we experimented with a thing online. Was that a stone? And that just didn't work, doesn't work, you know, nothing.
Right.
Right. So it just, Spanish is something that we had in Dover and that's something that had kept coming up. But that's, we're not, you know, again, it's not lock and stone. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll offer, I don't know, ladder or something. Or maybe we'll offer Vermont.
Clarify what you just asked and what I believe you just said was, the question was, was Spanish required later in high school?
Middle school.
Middle school. Any school beyond sixth grade?
Yeah.
And I believe you said yes, it was.
A foreign language is required to graduate from high school.
Nothing to do with Spanish, just a foreign language you got to have?
And not at middle school?
It is not an official requirement, but if you aren't preparing in seventh grade, it's very challenging to enter into that. So a majority of middle schools in Vermont do.
And we had a large Spanish program in elementary schools in New York, but we had a very large Spanish population, so it made really good sense to have Spanish and invest those resources in that. So I totally understand that. Could you share what it did cost you for the IB? You said it wasn't millions of dollars, but I'm guessing it was some substantial dollar amount for such type of training? It was only four years?
Maybe a hundred thousand dollars over three years.
Three?
Yeah. Four? Maybe a hundred twenty then. Around thirty thousand a year.
Okay.
There was extra training and some more, a lot of the cost is, it's not, it's not like we paid somebody thirty thousand dollars so we could apply their banner. It was a lot more professional development, which, you know, in Dover.
It's not books, it's professional development. It's money, it's less than a teacher.
Mostly. There was also, we paid some stipends because we had to be coordinators. And then we had to cover some, some substantive time and the coordinators had to, you know, go out of the classroom. But we felt it, we did it under the professional development. We told the town upfront what we were doing and they were very.
And do you have statistics that support that it was a good investment or you just have anecdotal evidence?
So we've just been, we just received our final approval, so, no.
No statistics to prove that it was worth it?
We haven't started. We just, we just started it.
So now my question too, like, these three years were the professional development, so has it gone into action yet? Or five years? So it's five years of the teachers getting trained in it?
And practicing and using different setting lessons with professionals.
But so the students haven't done it? Sorry.
Hang on a second, folks. This is not a discussion about IB.
No, no, I'm just curious. I mean, we're curious. I mean, it's part of what we're going to do.
Then what I would suggest is, we, you guys are very curious about it, we'll, we'll set up another meeting and we'll have, we'll get prepped to talk to you all about just IB. And I think for you to ask questions now, like, you know, how many dollars did you spend? And was it really that many cents? I mean, that's difficult. So we can, we can prepare and put together some information on IB specific to that. Okay?
I didn't mean to be asking.
I'm sorry.
I didn't mean to make you feel like I was attacking you.
Hold on.
I'm just trying to understand the dollars.
Yeah, and I'm just saying.
Our taxes are incredibly high in Ward's Row. Higher than that than they are in Dover. So I'm trying to understand the price, you know, cost analysis that we're talking about here, whenever you're.
And again, believe me, the IB program is not going to be your big driver in the cost.
Okay.
You know, your big driver in cost in education everywhere throughout the country is labor, is your, is your staff. That's your biggest driver in cost.
Fair enough.
Hang on, hang on. And in tuition in towns, your big driver is tuition. Because you have no control over that. The school's going to send you a bill and you got to pay it.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Tuition is your biggest driver along with staff or personnel in education because a school sends you a bill. If you want your child to go to Bennington High School, and Bennington High School sends us a bill for $21,000, we have to pay that. We have no choice.
Well, understanding that that's how our tax system works in Vermont, I understand the issue of that. So I, thank you. The seventy thousand dollars that's proposed to option A for professional development for teachers, I'm assuming that Ward's Row teachers have always received professional development?
This would be addition.
To do. To do, to do.
Well, I won't call it, but.
Because in option A, I'm sorry, in option, in option A, everything pretty much stays the same, except that. I'm sorry?
Taxes go up.
Taxes go up, exactly. And it's seventy thousand dollars more. And I'm trying to understand what the professional development is that they aren't already getting because they're already doing multi-grade teaching, and I presume they're going to continue to get whatever professional development they've been getting. Because, I mean, I'm all about investing in teachers. They don't get paid enough for what they do. And, you know, we are in debt to all of the teachers for spending the time with children to educate them. So I'm all about professional development. I'm just trying to understand the numbers because it seems.
The seventy thousand comes from two sources.
Okay.
One is professional development, multi-grade instruction, IB. Things that aren't happening now. Okay? So Ward's Row does not have professional development specific to multi-grade instruction. Okay? They have general professional development that can be targeted each year towards, science can be a focus, whatever. What I'm saying is, as the education leader, that we should be very specific about an investment in multi-grade instruction.
Absolutely.
So I'm taking that same suggestive tack with IB. That runs about fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay, so now you put IB back into it.
So you have about five to seven for multi-grade.
Okay.
And ten for IB. Okay?
Five to seven thousand?
Correct.
Okay. And then, and then ten?
Ten for IB, okay. Then kind of following up on your second answer, that you pay a fee to be a part of IB. That's nine thousand.
Right, but option, okay.
Okay, I'm trying to get you to your seven.
I understand, but option A, I didn't, so IB was in option A also. That's really the bulk of the seventy thousand is for IB, but they just said it's better than a single grade.
You have Spanish equalizing out? So if you didn't have a Spanish teacher, we're going to hire a Spanish teacher for Ward's Row? That's it, the suggestion. If you have a nurse a full day in Ward's Row and you only have them for a half day in Dover, we're going to increase that in Dover.
Okay.
If we have a librarian in Ward's Row, but a library media specialist that teaches both technology and library in Dover, we're going to suggest to equalize that out. That's where that's seventy thousand.
Okay, is it, again, I'm really sorry I wasn't here when everybody voted, but I was told, and it was my understanding, that the reason that the two schools came together and formed one district was that they could make better use of resources and share the specials teachers across the two schools. So now you're talking about increasing, so that's not sharing, that's adding.
Well, hang on a second. That's not the only reason.
Okay, I, I'm.
So there's a whole study out there. So again, instead of rehashing the whole study, which we had two and a half years of that, I would suggest you go online and you look at the study. It was, there was a lot more into sharing resources because specialists, we've been sharing them in the supervisory union for 25 to 30 years, ever since I've been on the board. So that was not the sole reason. There was a whole bunch of reasons. And I'm not going to go through them all tonight. Okay? Again, you can find the report and you can read the report.
Can you give the name?
You go to the media site. What's the blog site?
R-B-U-S-D.
And it's on there, the survey's on there.
Not just the survey, the report, the study.
I have a strong choice.
No, I mean, the survey, everything we've done is on there. So have you ever been to the site?
I've spoken to, actually. I've spoken to parents, mostly persons, because I'd rather talk to people about their experiences. So I would definitely advise that we look at that survey, but that was.
Yeah, it's, make sure you look at the report. It's not a survey.
The report, I'm sorry, the report.
There, there was a survey done too, and there's a few surveys done, but I asked that you look at the report. Now, that will cover a lot of your questions.
There's also a really good trail into every single, we insisted that every meeting There's also a really good trail into every single, we insisted that every meeting be videotaped so that people who missed meetings would be able to go back and see what the discussions were like, how decisions were debated and kind of come to.
And so, my last question is, since you don't really, you're, you're here not to necessarily answer all of our questions, when are you going to get back to us and when is there going to be a decision made? And do we get to vote or is it just the board that gets to decide?
In August, we, we set up a year ago.
Like August sixteenth or something like that?
No, hang on, let me finish, please, okay? I try not to interrupt you. What we had set up a schedule and we were taking input at these two meetings. And then in August, in both towns, we're going to have discussion and try to finalize something that we can give to the superintendent. You get a vote come February when we put a budget together. We, we very happy to take your input, but no, you don't get a vote. The board gets the vote on that. You voted for the board and then the board will put together the package if we would like this, the, our educational professionals to move forward.
So, our goal is just on the budget, right?
Right, you can...
I'm just clarifying that.
Well, and then also this year you get to vote for board members, so those are the things you get to vote for.
There you go.
So, Laura, then Dwight?
So, I just want to, you know, in hearing this conversation, as we have gone through this process, um, we really have not gone into this discussion at all about IB and Wardsboro. And having been on the Dover School Board for the entire time we were considering our community, um, I appreciate the skepticism, the anxiety, um, all of the questions. I think they're fair. Uh, we had them. We had them to the extent of bring us to the schools. We want to see, we want to understand. Let's talk with our teachers. I mean, we, we did extensive discussion, research, planning around this. And that's not how you are coming into this conversation. And so, I think that's actually really important feedback for all of us. Because if we move forward, I think for you to be comfortable with that, to understand it, for your taxpayers to understand it, um, for your teachers to understand it and be able to weigh in, and, and I think that's going to be terribly important. That is not actually how Dover didn't just, you know, get it jammed down their throat. So, I really appreciate the push that we're getting on this. Uh, I think that Dover voters would tell you they feel like it was, they feel pretty strongly about the investment and maintaining that. Um, so I think this is going to be a really important, um, discussion going forward. And not one that you necessarily see in a lot of these mergers that are happening. So, you know, for what it's worth, there's that.
Hang on.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, thank you. Obviously, the board, the school board in Dover, got a lot of time on this, probably here, it seems like, or here, man. And, uh, obviously the board was convinced that this is something they want to do. And it sounds like the board on town, in addition to the board going on. So, yeah, you guys have a lot of time to review this. Obviously, there's something about it you liked because the board liked it and the town liked it. We don't. So, I appreciate, Rich, um, the opportunity to have a, a certain presentation solely on the IB program. I think people who were interested in that, I would be certainly, to see exactly what made you come to that decision? Why, uh, why did you start in that, down that road? And what convinced everyone that that was the right, right decision to make? So, I think that's something we can appreciate highly too.
Okay, yes.
I just want to comment, IB, because I taught in an IB school pre-K and I can give you more information, but it is positive for students overall. It's, it's student inquiry. It's inquiry-based, student-driven, student-led, more deeper level thinking. So, it is a positive outcome even at the elementary level. Just, I, and I can talk to more after this meeting about it, but it is, it is a positive instruction way to go if you feel like the instruction of your school needs some revamping, just.
As a board, you're right to...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I, I was only going to comment, based on Mr. Anton's presentation, this, this PDF has been what's been on the website for us to look at to try to get an idea of maybe, all right, this is where the ideas are, are going. And to address specifically minimal change, option A, I know I was just struck that minimal changes cost more money and had IB implemented, that that would be the first possible easiest minimal step was to spend more money and to implement Dover's curriculum that they have implemented. And, and maybe that's why it was such a lightning rod, was that, that was, that was the first thing in through the door was here's, here's what the easiest minimal change would be.
Yeah.
Do this. Um, option B, obviously, there's going to be more options, there's going to be more extreme examples. And the idea of, of closing down grades in the school, obviously, is it was just going to be something that's going to be hard for people to swallow. Um, not even getting to option B, I just felt like option A, right up front, didn't seem like, we, we thought there could have been a better presentation for what minimal change would be.
Sure.
Uh, that it was too much too soon. No, I...
But I, I want to address that because that was the instructions he was given. Because, you know, um, I forget your name, but you asked me a bunch of que, specific questions like, you know, what's your breakdown? How do you get to seventy? Well, you know, nineteen, we don't, we're not there yet. Because we may decide, you know, if everybody came out and said, oh, we hate option A, why haven't we wasted a bunch of time putting together real numbers for that? Again, these are just, we're trying to get some ideas together so that we can then say, this is what the structure's going to look like. And then you can put some real numbers to it. And, pardon?
And we're voicing feedback.
No, I know, that's, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's, it's not like, he said, option A is the option or option B. You know, vote tonight, you can have option A or you want option B. And again, I think I said in the beginning, it's, it's going to be a combination of something else. I threw something off, out, else, out at the end of the last meeting and I almost got in trouble. So, um, you know, we, we just need to, that, that's what we're trying to do is get, get input.
You know, part of why we're meeting in, while we're in Dover, while we're meeting here is to get your questions so that we can be educated of what's concerning to the parents, what's concerning to the voters. And it's not just one town, it's both towns. So, you know, we're making a list, we're listening to you, writing down what's important, what do you know, say? We want to know because this is the opportunity, this is why we're having these meetings. And someone had inquired now, well, I'd like to know more about IB. You know, this might require us to then sit down and say, all right, these were the questions. This is what really people wanted to know, to put answers so that we can give a presentation again of giving you more information. But, you know, this is the part for us to be educated, what's important to you, what's not important to you, so that we have grounders of moving forward. You know, we're not making decisions, we're really collecting information that's important, that we don't otherwise have right now. So, don't feel like, you know, again, one idea is more important than the other. We are taking, getting all of your questions and getting all of this information together. I think we're probably going to be putting together a presentation of numbers or importance or why this program or why not this program. Might involve another presentation of giving some more information of what you're interested in. But, you know, we're listening. This is really like a listening tour, if you will, of what's important, so.
The other, you know, I would just remind folks that what we're, what we are going to be presenting at the end of the day is a budget that the Wardsboro and Dover taxpayers are going to be paying for, the Wardsboro taxpayers are going to be paying for the Dover kids and the Dover taxpayers are going to be paying for the Wardsboro kids. And so, we have to kind of keep that frame when we're thinking about what those kids have access to, right? So, I'm paying, I want to make sure that all of the kids that I'm paying for have something that feels equitable, so.
Go ahead.
Um, so, I was talking with my aunt who works over at Townsend Elementary and she was talking about the proposals for the Newbrook, Townsend, Jamaica situation. And those kids, I know that it was just a proposal, I know that it's not in stone, but one of the things that was proposed there was a breakdown of like early years at Jamaica, middle years in Townsend, then like later elementary in Newbrook and then sixth through twelve at Leland and Gray. So, I'm just curious, um, and I guess this question is for Bill because I know that he did that proposal as well. So, based on that proposal of potentially new fame Brookline kids taking their little kids all the way to Jamaica, I'm curious about that breakdown versus here, it's keep all the little kids close to home versus saying all Dover and Wardsboro, three-year-olds through second graders come to Wardsboro and all third through sixth graders go to Dover. So that everybody sort of crosses that line and you're, um, you're saying all of our little kids are going to be in one building and all of our middle, elementary kids are going to be in one building. And then you have choice for middle and high school. So, I'm just, I'm just curious how that all panned out? Because as a parent, I can appreciate keeping my little kids close to home, but knowing that that was an option in the neighboring towns, that makes me say, well, why does Dover stay untouched? But we have to divide our school population. And I know other schools are potentially being asked to divide their school populations. That doesn't really sit well with me. And then just one quick thing, this isn't a question, it's more of a comment of, I, I'm curious if it's been taken into consideration eliminating our library here in the school? Because we have a great town library right behind our school that has a lot of amazing resources. And if it's important to get those sixth graders ready for middle school and they have, and I know this obviously has a financial impact, but do we divide fifth and sixth grade at Wardsboro? If we keep our pre-K through sixth population in Wardsboro and say, fifth grade has their classroom and sixth grade has their classroom because it's sixth graders, we really have to get ready for middle school? I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know if it's been considered, but I just feel like our kids take field trips up to the library. It's literally right there and it's a beautiful library. So, maybe that's a way to maybe tweak things.
So, I, I just want to take, you know, I'm just making sure that you're right. So, your question is, so it's something that you look like you have looked at is maybe like Wardsboro, the Early Education Center, do pre-K through whatever grades here? And then do the other grades in Dover? And then is a library, removing your library a separate thought or is that part of it?
Is a separate thought, I just, those were two, two, yes.
And so, your, your, your thing is do away with the library and you utilize the town library?
So, if we kept our pre-K, if Wardsboro kept their pre-K, because as a parent, as an early educator, I don't think bringing a three-year-old program to Wardsboro Elementary brings enough value to lose half of our student population. I think that that's going to be a detriment to our community. So, if it's decided by the board that, no, we really feel strongly that a three-year-old program needs to come into Wardsboro, I'm curious about, because our neighboring towns, it's been proposed that those little kids are going to travel potentially thirty to forty minutes to get to their, their pre-K K classroom. Why is it okay over there possibly, but it's not okay here? And so, I'm just saying, let's take that into consideration. Instead of it being that Dover gets to keep their cute little entity and I think we're feeling a little like you're potentially going to divide our student population, but Dover stays untouched. Why is that? Why couldn't it be? If we're changing things up, if we're turning it sideways, why don't all the little kids come here and all the older kids go there and use both buildings to a better potential and keep both school populations up? And the next thing is staying in option A, we keep pre-K through sixth. If we keep pre-K through sixth, could we use our current school library as a sixth grade classroom instead of a library and utilize our beautiful town library? Because that has a lot of the resources that I think we could bring in and it would be, I think that could elevate what we do for library. So...
So, I'm, I'm just going to say that it's not a question, you know, I don't want to put Bill in the spot for that.
No, I mean, I'm just saying, does anybody...
So, I think, I think your proposal to, to, your suggestion to us is that something, I actually am taking notes from what everybody said, not just you. And I think then we, what I'm going to do is put them all down and then any way that turns in any cards at our next meeting is we're going to say, okay, here's what we've got for comments and then be able to start moving forward and kind of come up. And again, it's, you know, like I said earlier, is there's no, it's not going to be either option A or option B. So, maybe, you know, it's okay, Bill, here's what we want. We want this part from option A, this part from option B. We want your library idea, we want your IB idea, we want your, you know, main all the buildings, you know, fluorescent orange. So, I, I think that, you know, and that's exactly what we're asking for. So, we do, really do appreciate the comments. Yes?
Hi, Deirdre from Dover. Um, so, in your cost savings that we have set up, cost savings, did the transportation piece account into that at all for any changes?
No, and again, we, it's not, we didn't ask, we don't know, we don't know what the transportation's going to look like yet. But we assume that there's transportation, it's going to, whatever it's going to be, it's going to be. If we've got buses going back and forth for whatever reason, the cost is, is pretty much going to kind of be the same. All Bill did was he looked at some big numbers that we could just kind of bounce around. Again, until we tell him what we're looking for and we can put the numbers to paper. And that's something that we plan on doing September and October. We have to have a budget done by November to have it more in time to be voted on in February. Remember, it's not like town meeting anymore where you could, like, end of January is when you had to have your budgets done so that they could be worn in time to vote on a town meeting. You move town meeting now, the, the school district meeting up better than a month or about a month. So, now you have to move everything else up a month to... Yes?
Jill from Wardsboro. I just want to bring up something that we talked about a lot with that forty-six and that was safety, not just in the school, but safety going to the schools. Even though it sounds good to put kids over the mountain to go to these schools back and forth, now we've got busloads of kids going back and forth over the mountains. I want to talk about multiplying our safety issues. I never wanted to see any children going over the mountain, but that was my opinion, just because of safety.
So, Jill was on the study committee and I don't know if people that actually pay attention to my study committee, but one of the study committee members suggested when we had to come up with a name, it was, um, C B, C B D R, connected by dirt roads. Dover and Wardsboro, although we have a big border that we border each other, there's not a paved road that connects us directly. And if you call Route one hundred between Dover and Wardsboro for Stratton, like a real state road, it's not very good. Can you imagine, you know, if all the legislators except for order had to travel that every day to get to Mount Gay or how quick that would be fixed? So, um, so that's been a big concern. And one of our concerns, kind of going back to what you said, was, uh, Wyndham had the same argument with the state board, was the little kids, you know, if I have high school students, I don't know if any of you have driven school bus. I did right out of high school, it was very interesting. When you tell older kids like, hey, there's a problem with the bus, get off and go stand up by the apple tree, most of them are going to understand, you know, that there's probably a problem, they ought to go stand by the apple tree. Can you imagine having a bunch of three and four-year-olds and saying to them, hey, go stand up by the apple tree, there's a problem with the bus while the driver's trying to get people off? You know, they're going to be running around in circles and it's harder to control. So, that was one of, you know, I know that was a consideration during our discussion on the, the, um, putting the plan together. And, you know, again, that's something that you folks are going to have to weigh in on and tell us, you know, if that's important or not. Yeah, in the back.
Alison from Wardsboro. I heard maybe the questions of Bill and the board. Have any of you seen a school system that uses this type of Plan B with the transportation, safety costs? Is there, they shortened it in any way because it's going to take extra time to get from here to there? Um, has, have you seen that?
Well, if you're bigger school, it's just like Rattler, we have multiple schools in town. But again, it's the, you know, one town, um...
But the Wardsboro, our cost, we want to have the blessing.
I'm sorry.
Need to have to go for the blessing.
And, and I think you guys got to get, remembering the mindset. It's not, there's not going to be a Wardsboro tax bill anymore or Dover tax bill. It's the River Valleys Union School District. So, it's not like Wardsboro's going to put money in a pot, Dover puts money in a pot, we fight out who gets what. All the money, you guys vote us on budget, it all goes through the one pot and it's distributed by the budget that we vote. So, it's not going to be, you know, there was a lot of comments when we had the study committee with Marlboro, Dover and Wardsboro. And, you know, well, Marlboro wants the money that Marlboro puts in. Well, Marlboro, we're all putting money into that common pot.
But Dover is not changing.
Dover is changing, Dover is changing a lot, believe me.
Tell us.
Dover used to just do whatever we wanted to do. We were all by ourselves and we, you know, we had our voters. We're, we're now combining with another school district. That's a big change for us. It's not just our voters and the Wardsboro...
I don't see it though, I don't see it.
The, the, again, these are just thoughts, these are not a plan. This is not what we're doing. You know, so tell us what you want to see. I mean, if, if you just want to, you know, see Dover change, then tell us.
I think the board wants to go the way they were, you know? We're trying to work both ways, but you said the board wants to hear our consent?
No, thank you. And, and no, that's what I'm saying, I just, I'm not sure, you know, what can you say that? Everybody's changed. It used to be Dover voted their budget and we had our own budget. Now, we're, there's going to be two towns voting budget. And, you know, things like if Wardsboro doesn't want to see IB and... And, you know, things like if Wardsboro doesn't wanna see IB and there's enough voters out there, you know, that could change. And remember, we, Dover made a lot of concessions. We're almost twice as big as a town, but we brought our levels up high enough so that we could have equal representation on the board. So it wouldn't be that Dover outvotes Wardsboro. And we're trying to work as a group together. I think this is something that you're gonna see. This is step one of several. I think in a few more years, you're gonna see the legislature tell us, okay, you're not big enough yet and want you to come down and bind on the county level. Or, you know, I've been joking for years that the state isn't big enough to have more than one school district, you know, because we kept getting told by people up north that, you know, there's school districts in New York that are bigger than the whole state of Ohio. So, I mean, it's gonna be a huge process moving forward. I think we'll go one and then two.
Lisa from Wardsboro. Why do we have to pick another option? What is wrong with the options we already have?
I'm sorry, what is?
What is wrong with what we already have? Why do we have to go with another option?
Because one of the things you said in the agreement in the article that we would try to bring equity to both schools. So we can't just do what we, we can't just leave them alone. We have to do, bring some equity. Most of the equity's gonna be on the Wardsboro side where you're saying, well, what's Dover losing? Well, Dover's gonna have to, you know, there's gonna be money from that pot contributed. We already have Spanish. We're gonna do, you know, you guys can have a foreign language now. There's, so those are the kind of things that we need to do. Except equity doesn't mean, again, that it's exactly the same, you know. It doesn't mean both buildings have to be the same color, but you folks need to tell us what equity is.
So as a follow-up question, have we asked the teachers what, you know, what they want?
Yes, so part of the...
Do you want Spanish in Wardsboro? Do you want a full-time nurse in Dover? Have we, have we asked our teachers what's important?
So we have asked. What we did was we asked both administrators in both buildings to go to the staff and meet with the staff and get what was important from them. And both administrators reported back and a lot of the stuff you saw in the bar grails came from the, and the, I forget the title of the slide, but a lot of that came from the staff and the students, in the individual schools, not as a group, but as individuals. Yes?
Sorry. So I heard you say that, like, next month, essentially, you guys are going to sort of pad this out and say, okay, this is what it looks like. And then after that, you look at the budget. I'm just curious, and I know it's sort of like we're at the eleventh hour, how do we pull it all together? But it would seem to me like you would have to have some hard, and maybe you guys have them, you're just not ready to share them with us. And if that's the case, fine. But some harder numbers where if you're looking, so if you're looking at your own, whether it's this option A and B or some other hypothetical, here's A, here's B, here's C, these are actually the numbers. Because it would seem like without those numbers, how can you make those decisions? Because if you're just guessing, that we might save money here and we might spend money here and then you get into it and you're like, hmm, actually, we save a lot more money here or we spend a lot more money here, we could potentially, I mean, am I right in thinking that we could potentially end up in a worse situation if we have no idea what those numbers look like and you guys make a decision based on opinions? And you know what I'm saying? Like, I just feel like if we're not looking at the money until after, how do we know what is the most important to bring to both schools? Or how do we format that without having some kind of financial structure? Because otherwise, it feels like, how are we actually making this equitable and making this work if we have no kind of idea? It's all just lingering in the gray.
I think Wardsville Chomsky fits.
Okay.
So what I was gonna say is, I've been doing the budget in Dover for over twenty-five years and I have a pretty good feel for budgets. Rick's been your chairman, he's not currently, but he's been your chairman in Wardsboro for twelve years and, you know, been on the school board for a long time. And we have a kind of a pretty good feel. We're not making such radical changes that, you know, we're, I think we have a pretty basic understanding of what the costs are gonna be. Again, whatever we come up with, we just make a suggestion. You folks get to change it. You know, unfortunately, this first year, you only get to vote yea or nay, which we're not happy about. That's something we're gonna work on changing. You know, I think both towns really like the town meeting where, you know, we can say, hey, if we want a $2 million budget and to get there, we did away with paying the schools green. And you folks all say, hey, no, really, the school's gotta turn green because this is just not, their color is not good. So we want to vote in the extra $50,000 so you can amend the budget to go $2 million and $50,000. So, I mean, that unfortunate being in yea or nay, either you approve or you don't. But we're gonna have meetings before we set the budget and then we'll have the real numbers. Then you can come in and say, hey, look, you know, when we were doing the study, we thought Spanish was the greatest thing in the world and we really wanted it here, but maybe we should do something different and then we can make those adjustments at that time.
But, okay, so based on what you just said, it seems logical then that we would stick with minimal change to start with. Because if we potentially lose half of Wardsboro's school population and they go to Dover, I feel like if we make a change, because that is a radical change. And so if we make that kind of radical change and then next year, we're like, that was terrible. We shouldn't have done that. It's gonna be real hard to pull that back. So it seems more logical to say, let's make minimal change right now. Let's get this money, let's look at how it blankets out over these, these two communities that are sharing their money and their resources. And if in a year or two, you look at it and you say, okay, this isn't working. We tried to keep it the way that it was. We're hemorrhaging money over here. This isn't working over there. Now, we're past yea and nay and we're, we're past the yea and nay. Because you're saying like, all we get to say right now is yea or nay. But if you completely reformat the structure of the school, if we completely change what students are in which building versus just essentially keeping Wardsboro students in Wardsboro, Dover students in Dover, maybe making a few tweaks here or there to make it feel like it works a little bit better, we get our yea or nay budget vote and then we let that roll. And then we, then you guys have some time and you can say, this is not working. You can come back and say, it didn't work to stay the same. We actually have to change something. We're all gonna come into it with better education as to what didn't work, why it didn't work and how we can make it better. Right now, we're guessing. So if we change the format of the school, we're not going to be able to come back to where we are.
So I just wanna make comments. Does that clarify what I'm saying with the yea or nay? Is at town meeting now, we have a discussion, you vote. What's gonna happen this year, for the first year, you're gonna vote by ballot for the budget. So you're not gonna stand there and raise your hand. That's what I'm saying. It's an all or nothing vote. It's either you vote for or you vote against. It's kind of what Leland raised.
You're talking about the budget then?
Right, the budget vote.
Right, what I'm talking about...
Well, hang on, I mean, because I think, so we're hoping to change that till we go back to a town meeting style where we can have a discussion about the budget. But we won't have discussions about the budget before we get to the vote, before it goes to, to need printed. Because we have to, the board has to vote to adopt the budget. So you will have a period of time when we're doing that to give input on the budget.
On the budget, yes. But I'm just saying, we're, you're gonna, you're gonna create a format of what the two schools look like in the next month approximately. And after that, you're going to figure out how to budget for those two schools, correct?
For the school system.
Correct.
The one school system.
One school system, two buildings. I'm with you. But what I'm saying is, if those two schools, you have three-year-olds through sixth graders and you have four-year-olds through sixth graders and you make a little adjustment, but you're looking at the money, fine. But if you change it to three-year-olds through second graders and three-year-olds through sixth graders and then you look at the money, what I'm saying is, I feel like it's all guesswork right now. So why make that radical change now? Why not make those little adjustments, keep it the way that it is and see what the money looks like actually? And once we got our legs under us and we're like, this is what the format is and then we can come together as this, our unified school district, as our two communities, and maybe it'll work great. Maybe we'll all be surprised and it'll be beautiful and we can keep our identities and we can keep our students in our towns and it'll be great. And maybe it won't, but then we can say, listen, these are the numbers. They speak for themselves. We tried it. This is our budget. It's not working. This is what we need to change.
So just a few quick points. One, you know, the Dover school board brought to the town of Dover, the first year of Act 60, a plan. They cost the town $60,000 just to raise the money. And then we had to pay five times that for our Sharpool payment to the state of another $300,000. So I don't think any school board has ever always just been concerned about the money. We've always wanted to give a very good educational program. Because it was just about the money. All we'd be doing is, is every board would be cutting and slicing and I don't think Wardsboro's ever done that and I don't think Dover's ever done that. I think we've given very good budgets, we've given the resources to our staff and our administrators to run a good school system. So budget is not the biggest thing on our mind and it's not the biggest thing on our mind in here. There were just some numbers thrown out there so that, because somebody was gonna ask that question. I don't, we have all said, everybody that was on the study committee and I think everybody on this board, we don't know if we did nothing or if we made one school or if we tuitioned everybody out. I don't think we've ever said, this is gonna save us, everybody, taxpayers are gonna save half their taxes. I think the boards have always been very good about looking at what's best for the student. And I think we've really had the best interest of the students in heart. And we're not just guessing. We're gonna ask our educational professionals, your administrator from Wardsboro, the administrator from Dover, our superintendent to come up with a plan and their staff and their professional staff. It's not, the school board said, hey, Bill, give us a presentation that moves all the kids out of Wardsboro after the third grader, after they're five years old. We asked them to come up with a plan based on, you know, the, all that information we showed there. So I do take a little offense when you say guessing, because it wasn't a guess. We, we asked for...
I was basing that on when you said that you didn't have it laid out. And so I, I don't need to split hairs on the guessing. I appreciate that you guys have, are doing, you have a huge task. I get it. And as a community member, as an early educator, as a parent, I mean, I'm doing my part on my side to say all of the things because I'm not a, I'm not a wallflower, you may have guessed. But I, I just, and I hear you saying that you're doing the best you can for the students. As somebody who moved to Wardsboro, knowing the size of our school, knowing it was blended classrooms, I made that choice to buy a house here. My kid just graduated the sixth grade. He did eight years in this school. I feel confident in the education he got in this school. I am a believer in education. I, I couldn't support it more. So do I always feel like it can, it can always elevate? You can always bring it up. I don't necessarily believe, because I'm a small-town member and I chose to live in this town, I don't feel like going to the next town over that's a little bigger necessarily would give my child a better education. Because I'm a parent who's involved with my kid, I have faith in the staff in this building and what they bring. And so I think with opportunities that could come in, I think it could enrich it even more. But I don't necessarily feel like my child, I have one child who would potentially finish the year in Dover if the, if the school population split. I don't feel like she needs to go to Dover to get a richer education than what my son got at Wardsboro. So, you know, I'm just saying that I always think that education can be richer. I think you can elevate it. I think you can bring more things. But I don't necessarily think that single-grade classrooms or bigger class, I definitely don't think bigger classroom population, I think that's a detriment. I think that is not in favor of the children. So I just wanted to be clear in saying that, you know, I feel like some things could stay settled here and let's see what it looks like. I was only talking about the dollars because I feel like we're talking about the, you know, the budget is what's next and that's, that affects it. We can't just disregard it. It's part of what it is. Everybody's talking about this equity and how we give each student the best education, dollar for dollar, student for student. I think that there, I would like to think that there's a way to do it with keeping our Wardsboro school identity and keeping our students in our town. That's all I'm saying. I'll try to be quiet.
One other question I have is, I knew that there was a new budget or some, something was signed at the state level that changes the student to teacher, staff to teacher ratio. And I'm wondering if this is to be in compliance with that in...
Well, there's a study, yeah, it hasn't been determined yet. There are recommended levels and there has been for fifteen years now. You know, all through Act 60, they were saying, you know, you small schools, the big schools were pointing their fingers at the little schools, saying, you cost us too much money, but yet, you know, the cost per pupil in Burlington is pretty comparable to the cost per pupil at Leland and Gray. So I don't see how they could point their fingers. But that's a whole Act 60 and 68 discussion. And if you want, I'll spend three or four hours with you and go over all of this.
No, I have done a decent amount of research on that.
So we, we kinda lived it.
Staffing changes and things like that.
But that is something we do have to pay attention to. Because if you don't follow the proper student staff ratios, if they set that, sometimes they'll set penalties and, you know, sometimes the small schools, you know, we were able to kind of skirt that a little bit. And I think that was part of the reason why they wanted to see some unified school districts so that there would be one less excuse. But that's just my, my feeling from looking at the peanut gallery, from the peanut gallery. But Laura will tell you all about it up in the...
No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna tell you all about it, but I'm happy to stay and talk to you afterwards. But I would say ratios is real. That pressure is gonna be continual. One of the things that we have been trying to do, and we've been trying to push on this for years, is in terms of rural waiting. So that it actually, it costs more to educate, to provide the same education, which is what's constitutionally required, substantially equitable in a smaller school than in a larger school. And right now, we don't have a means of scaling those costs. And so we actually say, you know, around, you know, we actually say, this is not what we say. The system works where you get $10,000, you get $10,000, you get $10,000. You get twenty kids in a classroom, you get five, you get ten, and we call that equity. So, and that's the system that we're trying to work within. So it's very dynamic. There's a lot that's moving. The entire state is going through this process, most of the state, with the exception of Chittenden, which is growing. We are seeing pretty dramatic population loss and in southern Vermont, that's really profound. And so for me, I wanna make sure, not only as a legislator, but, you know, on this board, that we are positioning our communities to retain as much strength and excellence as possible. Because, you know, if, if we weaken our communities, you know, we're going in this direction. So, you know, please, please know that that is, I know that that's a shared objective of this entire board. And, you know, I've never had to care or think about the Wardsboro kids and Rick's never really had to care or think about the Dover kids. And that's gonna be a whole new world for all of us. So just have patience with all of us. Continue coming and providing this feedback. It's really important. You know, we tasked Bill, not with coming in with a big detailed plan that, you know, we could bisect it, you know, the big, big pieces so that then he can go back with your staff, our staff and, and come back with something more detailed. You know, we're gonna have to keep working through this. So we're gonna all have to breathe and work together to keep, you know, strong education in our schools.
And one of the things that really affects Dover and Wardsboro in the past for years is when you don't control the high school. So you balance your budget on what? So you get, you know you wanna be in this area with your budget. You know that your tuition for the secondary is gonna cost you this. You subtract that from that and then you say, okay, now here's what I got. How does it fit? And I mean, for years, we had a lot of arguments, Laura and I especially, over, you know, we're really balancing the budget at the elementary level because that's the only thing we control. And now, that's the only thing we still control is the elementary level. And we don't have a lot to say, like I said, is, you know, the high schools decide what they wanna charge and, you know, we, there is a true-up thing and there's some other, some other little crazy twists and turns with the law. But for the most part, you know, that's what we get to control is just the little bit of elementary education we do. And it makes it somewhat interesting. What?
So, Taniel, I appreciate your thoughts about, you know, my son graduating has an exceptional education with Wardsboro. And why does it have to change for your... with Wardsburg, and why does it have to change for your other child that might be affected by this? I mean, I don't, I think what's really wonderful about this is that Wardsburg and Dover are really a great mirror image and a good thing, I think, of the journey to create a school district, a combined school district. Because you have an excellent program, and you have community support from parents who really care about their school, which is evident from today and last month. And you can see that in both of the schools. So I don't think we're looking to change that, and we're not looking to say that Wardsburg would have to become Dover, or Dover would have to become Wardsburg. Because it really was clear when the kids did their presentation last summer, or last full year to Governor Scott, of how amazing Wardsburg education was in the presentation that they gave the fifth and sixth grade class, and Dover. So we're not looking to change that, we're looking to increase opportunities for their students if we can find those. So really, I do appreciate Wardsburg saying, you know, we're doing great at our school, and we don't need to change. So I, I thought the perception is that we're not looking to change you, or for that matter, we're not looking to change Dover. Because it really is, I think, a combined we. And at least from my, you know, experience with this board the past year, we work really well together. It's not a Wardsburg Dover, it really is, you know, a community. And I feel like the communities mirror each other of their strengths and what's important. So, you know, that's important to us going forward, we're not thinking of, you know, this is Wardsburg concerns, this is Dover's concerns. It's really what's gonna be good for all these students, because that's what's important. It's a community of students. So, you know, at least that's my thinking of going forward, what's important, what was important, the questions raised, so.
Hey Bill? How long do you need to put the all-B thing together so we can...
Well, I would recommend that you have the IB people, the principal of the last two years in there. Four, five.
So I just wanna respond to that, like I appreciate what you're saying. I think the only way that that could actually happen is keeping all of Wardsburg's student population. Because I don't think it's possible to say, you're still a Wardsburg student, even though you're going to Dover Elementary School, and you're gonna graduate from Dover Elementary School. If you graduate from Wardsburg Elementary School at the second grade, that's not keeping that Wardsburg identity. I think it creates a separation, either in the Dover school, where you have like, well, you're a Wardsburg student, you're a Dover student, or you lose your Wardsburg identity going to that school. So I can only guess that that means that you're taking into consideration, heavy consideration, keeping our student population in our town. Because otherwise, you cannot honor our school and town identity if we have to go to the neighboring town's school. And I mean, I mean, I guess you could toy with changing the school names, but I know that everybody wanted to keep their school names, you know. Otherwise, I feel like that just can't happen. And even if you change the school name, on some level, it's gonna take several generations before you drop the, I'm a Wardsburg student in Dover's school. So I just wanted to respond to that, saying that really works if we keep our student population.
Well, I would guarantee, you know, after next year, nobody will ever graduate from Wardsburg Dover School again, because there is no more Dover School, and there is no more Wardsburg School. There's a River Valley Unified School District.
Are we teaching the schools to that, that, that...
Well, there is, there is, there is no, there will be no more Dover School. Dover School Board will cease to exist, as will the Wardsburg School Board.
I'm just a school board, but I heard talk that they were...
You can put any name you want on it, but it's on the building, but the, you know, the paychecks, the checks, the meetings, all gonna be River Valley Unified School District. It's not gonna be Wardsburg or Dover anymore. I mean, it's just, that's the reality. I thought we maybe would do an IB presentation next week, if you guys wanted to, but I've been told that, that they couldn't even get it together until the 20th. So I know the Dover principal's out of state right for, till the end of the month.
Yeah, I, I just, Susan, I think you want, I mean, I can, I can give you some.
Allison's going for the next...
People oozed on the ground. And do that, do it well.
We have, yeah, so we're gonna have to, I, I was hoping to do something quicker, but I don't think we're gonna be able to. There is some stuff that I still, I kept the IB, my IB book, so I'll try to get that to Anita and see if she can get some of that on the webpage for you folks, so you can... Bill did a really nice presentation, he was trying to sell it to us. There's some surveys we did with staff and with some parents. So I'll try to get some of that stuff together, and I'll try to get it...
Is that on our website?
I don't think so. That was never up on the website, was it Bill?
Uh, it's, yeah, it's current.
IBO.org has wonderful videos.
There you go.
IBO.org has wonderful videos for parents for consideration of why.
And we have, I think we do have stuff on the Dover website.
Yeah, there's some on our website.
But I don't think the history, how we got there, is that, what, what were you looking more for? Sorry, so what were you, for the IB stuff, what were you looking more for, how, why Dover did it?
Well, my question with it was, my personal question with IB was, I was speaking with a parent who is on the school board at the mountain school. And they had done extensive research into it, and said that because it didn't extend past sixth grade, because there's one high school in the area, they opted to not spend the money on it because they didn't feel like it was worth the cost and the time. It, it did not seem like the investment was worth it, since it died off after sixth grade. And most colleges internationally look at it, and then, you know, speaking with people in the area who are in college, college age, they said, you know, New York State is the most known state in the United States that looks at it. So they were like, what exactly is it bringing to, like, what is the balance? And I haven't done all, I'm asking the question, because I clearly don't have enough information as to, does it actually bring enough to the students for the cost if it stops at sixth grade? Like, is it worth that cost?
And one, and there was some discussion on that lines, and one of the things that we were seeing is that there's more and more places researching it, and remember, it started for international, for a lot of the parents who had children in schools that were, you know, like assigned to the, diplomats, or they were in the military, or they're...
Consistent high school.
Right, so have a consistent, and a lot of the education, a lot of the, the, um, parts of the... The way that, the instruction was based on the Common Core, which we were headed to anyways in Vermont. And we figured, you know, like somebody had, always has to be first. And, you know, I think you'll see more and more schools doing it, so we figured, it, the, it's not like, if we hadn't invested $2 million, it probably wouldn't have happened. The investment versus the results, and the, we felt were very well worth it. But that was just the Dover order.
She's giving us questions that we should use in terms of bringing back additional information, which is helpful.
And then also, there's stuff online, and maybe you can look at. And we, I mean, if we could have, I would have tried to get something together quicker, and just don't think we can pull it off.
And just in case I'm not able to make it to that meeting, am I right in hearing that it's not actually used in this school currently, or it is asking us?
No, we've been, they've been using it for, well, Susan, you want?
We've been using, so to become an IB world school, you have to go through an authorization process.
Okay.
The first year, you're required to teach so many units, and the second year, so we've...
So while you're learning, you teach it?
I think we've been fully engaged for the last two, but we just became fully authorized as an IB world school.
But you've been using it to some level?
Almost five years.
Almost five years.
So on the, the plans in Bill's presentation, is there any other comments? And remember too, if you have a comment that you don't wanna say publicly, go off the card, and don't take offense, do it. Is there a box back there for them? Yes. Cool. So put it in there, and then what we'll do is, we'll type them up from the ones who were in the Dover meeting, that these means, and Anita will put them online, so you can go see what the comments were.
So you'll respond to any of the questions?
No, we're not responding to questions, we're just putting, most of them were comments, we didn't really... The, the last time was more comments, but if you have questions, then we're not gonna respond online. We'll bring them up at the next meeting. I, I typed up their, last time we had, one, two, three, four, five. There was five, five women, three of them were kinda, kinda opinions. And there was only really one question, and it had to deal with, you know, how much money. So, but we just didn't wanna get, put everything out, and so we, we had the presentation in both towns, so that we could, you know, we didn't wanna like say, hey, the school board is looking for this thing, because we wanted to make sure that we got input in both areas, so.
So, Dover's been doing IB for possibly the last five years, and Wardsburg hasn't. I'm curious as to, like, is, like Dover is doing so much better than us because of the IB? Or, you know, test wise, are we still, is it really improved their test scores? Or they're so much better than us, and that's why our...
That was back down a little bit, three or four years ago, but we were such small groups, both Wardsburg and Dover, you know, two or three students in a, in a class can skew scores. That's why we're not allowed to release them. But we base it on more than just test scores, because it's also the whole student. And I'm sure it's definitely folks here in Wardsburg, I mean, we're always called to, hey, we've got, you know, three-year students in our school, and we love them, you know, or they were so well prepared, or, you know, they did really well. And you look at graduation rate, so it's more than just test scores. And again, it's...
But we're not judging test scores, are we?
Yeah, not, I wouldn't say test scores, but there's a lot of assessment that goes on. And that was one of the things that Dover started 12 or 14 years ago. And I, when I don't like to say testing, because it wasn't like to test to get a score, it was to assess, to see what was working, what wasn't working. So if a staff, a teacher thought they were doing really well explaining division in math, and they gave an assessment, and not one of the students answered, they said, oh, well, we should spend more time on that, and then maybe they give a multiplication assessment, and then they say, oh wow, we did really well on that, you know, we can maybe move on to the next topic. So there's a lot of assessing. But testing is, you know, the state doesn't test. And the problem with the state testing is, because of the small number of students, they, they don't like to release the scores, and they don't like to, to look at the individual numbers, because different classes will skew different results. What we've looked at in Dover over the last few years is just consistent improvement, so that, you know, the bar go, kinda goes up mostly, there may be a few little flips in there. Does that answer your question?
Uh, thanks, I guess, I just, I'm curious. I mean, I find that was working really, really well in Wardsburg.
So if you can, you can go in the state, somewhere in the Department of Defense of State, you can see test scores from districts, you can't see individual schools, can you Bill?
I think Dover...
No, it's less than 10 in grade.
I think Dover's, the results were...
It's like you're...
The Wardsburg's more...
Yeah, so I think if you go online, you can see that, Wardsburg, they don't release it because there's not enough students. It's what, I don't know. So anybody else? Please leave a comment, we really appreciate it. Remember, our next, next meeting is August 6th here again, maybe in the library, if there's not as many people.
Can you, I'm just being a little, okay, what are you planning to present on August 6th that's different than today? It'll look more finalized?
No, from August 6th, the board's gonna have to start having discussions. To give Bill by September 1st, the beginning of September, here's what we envision this new River Valley school district to look like. Start putting budgets together and do the specifics. We're not gonna say, Bill, we want three teachers and, and two aides and one administrator.
But that's to start with that discussion.
Right, we're gonna say, Bill, we like this, and this, and this, so now can you come through and flush that out for us, and see what it's gonna look like? Pardon?
It's here, I'm excited.
Yeah, we're, we're a little, we did backwards a little bit, just 'cause we, we only met once in each month, and, and just the different, things with the different school board meetings. So we're gonna get back to our regular schedule starting in August. So the first Monday will be in Wardsburg.
Here in the school.
Right, and then the third Monday will be in, we talked about somewhere else, but everybody likes it at the schools, and the third Monday will be in Dover.
Can you just talk a little bit more about how you envision that discussion that we're taking place? So are we gonna be having a discussion, if we're gonna be having like a lengthy, um, public session at the beginning? Are we going to be...
I see it as a line in the, a line on the agenda, that it'll be, you know, the formation.
Is the board gonna be talking?
Right, yeah, because the board, the board's now gonna give their opinions, they've heard from that, we'll get the feedback, and we can have discussions, the public can weigh in. Eventually, we're gonna have to make a decision. And I'm hoping we can make a decision sometime at the end of August or beginning of September, because if we go much longer, then we're not gonna be able to create a vote yet.
I just think it's important to be clear for people when they're coming to this meeting, will it be similar to this?
We will take, we will take thoughts from the public, but the board, if, the public doesn't get to vote, the board is the one to serve.
Can you basically, can you say, and you're in China?
No, and you can, you can give it, it's an open meeting. All right, it's an open meeting, just like today, hey, do whatever you want, you can talk. We're gonna come back and have, have comments from here, right? Yeah, the index cards, comments from Dover, we're gonna discuss all of those comments, all the comments that you all have made tonight, and we're all going to discuss. And then I'm gonna put each board member on the spot, and say, okay, what do you think it should look like? And then we'll let the public weigh in, and then we have to start flushing it out. And I'm, I'm envisioning, I was thinking of pieces of paper, so like, if Laura says, okay, I'd like to see A, B, and C, and then maybe, you know, Dwight says, well, I, I like A and B, but I don't like C, so we can have two votes for A, and just kinda see where, where it goes. Yes? Okay. Thank you, folks, it was really, we really appreciate it. We have a couple more things to do. Hey folks, we're still having a meeting, please, so if you wanna have a big conversation, just get outside. Hang on, hang on. I know, nobody can hear. Hey folks, we're, it's really hard for us to hear, it's not a great room, so. I mean, I could hardly hear Lady Next. I mean, I kept, I'm not, I wasn't sure what you were gonna say. Okay, or start off.
Okay, so I think it's gonna be very, I think it's gonna be very important for us to provide more than just a presentation opportunity around, for people. That's, and I don't know what that looks like. I think it is completely reasonable for people to arrive in the space and go WTF, because some of us had that, you know, reaction when we first talked about it. And had, we had plenty, we were deliberately slow and thorough, and did everything possible to ensure our comfort, and our staff's comfort, and our community's comfort. And, you know, I know that we don't have that kind of what period term, I know that this is...
We actually do.
Well, maybe we do, maybe we do. I don't know exactly what this, which one, but I think we can not expect people to feel like it's time to go with the presentation. And I think, I think we have to reflect that back as soon as possible, okay?
Okay, so let me just make one correction.
Yeah.
So I think we could do that, because we could say, Bill, no change a thing.
I think we...
And then, and then we can take that time, so that could be an option.
Obviously, you guys have become authorized in four years, or whatever, five years. I mean, was there a discussion, was there a discussion after the first, second year, that we'll give it a try, and then two years, pull the plug, or do you guys have a commitment anymore?
Yeah, we're in.
Or do you guys have a convention anymore?
No, we, we had to go to the money upfront. So we put the money away. We approved the money one year for the, for what we thought was gonna be the process to get there.
I was wondering if it's because we didn't have the opportunity here, and this is part of discussion, because we didn't have the opportunity here to do all the research you did, you know, can it be a year long process?
So I, this is what I'm saying is that, I think, right, this is a, that's a really good discussion at the next meeting. Because I think that's what the girl at that point was saying also is, you know, just for now, let's just put the two under one umbrella and then that could be an option.
It's not better or worse.
Right.
It's not better or worse, but it is a significant difference. So there's been a significant investment made in a very significant, you know, distinct framework for professional development. And so, you know...
So, but again, one of the reasons I voted for it, even though I wasn't a huge...
What do you have on?
I just think it started ground zero. People know nothing about it.
Yeah.
And it's hard to get basic education of what this brings to your school and what this brings to your student. I don't think we need to go in depth. I just think that people don't know what it is. And when people don't know what something is, it's a risk.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I think too, is I was not, you know, I was Johnny and thinking I was most skeptical. And, you know, one of the things, the reason I was able to buy into the bill was even if we went through four years, it didn't matter because the staff is getting the professional development and you can never take that away from them. So if we went four years and said, now we're gonna pull the bug or it's gonna get bad.
There wasn't obviously a need to pull the bug, Ben. Obviously, you went into it, pulled four.
Right, well, we put the money aside, but the voters at any time could have said, you know, we're all done doing this.
And don't forget, you guys also voted for 10 in Wardsworth.
Right, we're gonna be voting at the school.
We're gonna be voting at the school.
I would like the opportunity to have a presentation, whether that's through Susan and through Allison from our Ivy, Rutherford's program advisors, to give an overview of Ivy, but I agree with Laura that we've had many years to think about this and to see it. The expectation that after one presentation, that that will answer all questions or they'll feel like, okay, I'm agreeable to that. It's probably unrealistic, but I would like to give some more information. You know, they were talking about, you know, structure, why it was important, financials. And also quite frankly, I think it's important for the parents of Wardsworth to talk to the parents of Dover and say, well, what do you think?
Well, unless you guys are heavy lifting, I recognize that. So, you know, you guys, for the first, what's that?
So anyway, but this has been a conversation that's, yeah, we've lost everyone.
Yeah, next time, next time.
I think, I think you guys will make good points and add something you bring up at the next meeting. So did you have something to add to this? What was he, him?
Yeah.
No, him. Was that your new business?
That was what my new business was, hold up later and then have to seriously take a D to it.
So nobody, everybody else stood and had on a new business? Go ahead.
No new business, but can we go back to just the conversation for August 6th and the structure? Because I think the structure's important. I do like, can we talk about that?
Yeah.
Can I go back to one more moment just before that?
Yes.
Which is, you said that it lines up with where the direction we're going in the state right now, the Ivy curriculum? Is that his...
No, I said, did you say that?
Is it true or not? Okay, sorry. That's another point to make.
That's a good point, yeah. It's one of the basics for the Common Core.
But I mean, the Common Core marries up well with the Ivy program. That's the direction the state's going.
The development.
I think that that's a very good point for you.
Actually, the state used the Ivy as part of their...
When the Common Core was developed, Ivy was one of the funds. But that, that goes back to the point of a general presentation of that information. Goes back to your point of taking the time to go slow. Goes back to your point about being at ground zero. Goes to your point that that doesn't have to slow anything else down while you have that discussion. The reason I included it is because the direction from you guys was to make sure that I kept things equitable. And that was one of the things that we worked, so.
It's pretty much a belief that for Dover parents, say, is a god.
Well, it's, it's impressive too. You know, we have, you know, you're going on it, but they don't want to get rid of it. It's impressive, you know, for people who work in that.
Look, maybe in Wardsworth too, they're fine without having it.
Well, it's not corrupting the poor, but we might get some improvement, it's, we got, so.
I mean, what you're saying is not, it gets worse. It never stays the same. No, I think it's, I just, at the next meeting, I'm not gonna, we're not, we can't get hung up on one thing. We can't spend three hours on that Ivy.
This is a big, this is a big...
I don't think this is a big issue, thank you.
Ah. I mean, I think you saw the vision.
We do not present as a corporate activity of budgeting or them.
I don't see it at all. I see if it winds up meaning that, you know, we do the Ivy in Dover and it's not offered in Wardsworth and we start doing the training or something, I think most people, most of the people on that side, they'll be happy. And it gives us that year one for Bill to start doing professional development as a big group instead of as two different buildings. And I don't, I wouldn't get hung up on it.
Hold on, what you suggested there is definitely something.
So...
Can I ask someone a question?
You can ask one, two questions, but...
So...
What time you wanna get home?
I wanna get home early.
So, but just in thinking about that, so we presented two high level concepts to us. Both included Ivy.
Yes.
And are they both doable with...
Everybody's doable.
With, yes, everything.
Because our, our approach to him was make it equitable. If we, if we're hearing that people don't really, if, if everybody works, if we don't want Spanish, we don't want a foreign language and they're happy with not having it, then that's equitable, isn't it?
I know, I think it is actually. I would, I just, yeah, that's not...
Equitable does not mean it has to be exactly the same.
I would argue with, no, I agree with you, okay? But I think that every kid in this district has to have access.
So maybe you don't have Spanish here and if the parent wants her job, they have Spanish, you have to go, I mean, that's the same. So that's one of the things is, you know, don't, we can't get hung up because this isn't, you know, this is like democracy. We gotta experiment. So to your question is, we got a regular budget agenda, a regular Ivy to take care of the agenda, if you will. We will have a discussion about where we're moving forward. Rick and I usually meet before meetings to kind of come over the page. We've got the agenda set and we'll, you know, I have a few visions. Bill will weigh in on it, Rick will weigh in on it, and then we'll run the meeting at that time. You know, I think now though, the board needs to really think about what's important to them as a board member and what you wanna, you wanna see just in this district. And I think it's our turn now to give our opinions. I mean, I think we, we haven't really given our opinions yet. Because I asked that we hold back on our opinion so we don't sway the public. We've given two meetings to tell us what we think. We're gonna see the cards and then I think we need to start moving forward. We need to start making some hard decisions. And I will guarantee you that we're gonna make some people very unhappy or we're gonna make some other people even more unhappy, you know?
So one question for you, because I know we have excellent note keeper, but I do like the idea of having a visual because it's almost like, you know, a public work session, if you will, of the next meeting of what, you know, Laura, what's important to her, thinking of the questions from the last two meetings, what's important to all of us, that we have beyond notes, seeing like a visual. Because really it is gonna be a work...
It's important.
Well, I know, but I'm talking about, I'm talking about taking a worksheet, you know, saying this is what's important so that we're combining and taking the best of the ideas.
And it told me that was all along. That was part, half of his presentation was the stuff we do.
Right, absolutely. But I think then taking and saying, all right, this is what each person, each board member thinks is important. Maybe it becomes a hybrid model between A and B or something totally different.
I think we have a vote on that relation. It's not immediate, but we don't feel bad. I'm not commending for putting something down.
That was the, the target was to put something concrete so that these discussions could happen.
They can happen.
Is that, no, I feel really good about where you guys are. You have engaged public, you know? I feel...
From the presentation, A and B, what are your thoughts?
I mean, I'm not gonna ask you to say which one you like even be.
No, I understand that.
It's gonna be what's important to you.
But you're gonna be asking each of us sort of, you know, to say...
Maybe you guys all, really what's important to your voters.
Your voters, your representatives.
To what you represent.
But you know what? The other thing is, we went into some meetings trying not to give an opinion. We got pretty beat up and we weren't willing to say, here's what you gotta do with the church.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a balance. We definitely are representing, but we're also representing as voters as well. You know?
I mean, what's also important is, you know, not to have, as much as we're representing our voters, also that, you know, it's one community. I know there's a lot of Wardsworth, Dover, Wardsworth, Dover, Wardsworth, my school, what's important to you. We're in it together, I believe. And the more we start talking about it, not here versus me.
Language is really important.
I think it is, because otherwise, I understand what T L is saying. You're making a sacrifice. What is Dover giving up? I think one of the other members here is saying, well, what's Dover giving up? You know, what's the sacrifice to Dover? So, you know, I just don't want it to be pitted against...
And that's what I try to say, you know? Maybe that's part of it. We need to do this.
You know, it's still very...
Oh, it's on the response. Do you know what I mean? And that's what it is. It's a good thing, it's a good thing. But we're gonna keep getting that.
I guess what I'm saying is it's our job.
Absolutely.
It's generally happens when we meet, as we see people fight. It's our job for a while and say, no, it's not the Wardsworth, it's the word of the day. What is the word of the day? I mean, it's a good issue.
I mean, I've been saying that.
You've been saying it, haven't you?
The other thing is somebody, I don't remember who said, well, I didn't, I don't like to read reports. I like to talk to people. The problem is, is when you talk, I mean, the report is, the word is, you know, Wayne Dangler. So we say, famous of English, very quiet.
In fact, you know, yeah, we are representing, but we're also expecting knowledge and information about, about churches. We're expecting to inform the citizens because we know more of what's going on. We know more, we're supposed to know.
It's every day.
But sometimes I think we assume as we live through it, that people not, and it's second nature to them.
Right, that's, that's the point. It's a lovely, it's our job, part of our job.
It's our job. Okay, so let's, so that's my vision, that's what I envision. But we usually meet the week before. We hit for this one because it was the same presentation. But that's what I'm hoping. And I'm also gonna try to get all these cards typed up on the second page and I'll send that all out to you. And I'll actually send the agenda the next few days later. Bill makes sure your girl doesn't hear it. Anita will, you know, yeah.
I know. Are we gonna take the questions to Anita and have them up?
Right. But we're not, we're...
You won't answer, but you'll have questions.
We'll bring them up and I think that's where we'll start this discussion next week, is hear the comments and we'll hand them back to everybody. Okay, I need to go, if we're all set, next meeting is August 6th, 7:00 PM at the Wardsworth Elementary School. I don't know, you guys will have to kind of play it by ear if you think we should be here. I had a lot of trouble hearing people over there. If we can meet in the library, it'd be a lot better, but...
That's not a bad idea.
Well, there's not gonna be a presentation, right?
Right, but I mean, I guess we just have to be, have it available. So I need a motion on executive session contract.
Are we going superintendent?
Yes. Do I have a session?
Yeah.
Okay, all those favors say aye?
Yeah.
So we gotta give them a minute to clean up.
Do you have a decision?
Um, yes, we will vote to do something. So if you want to wait a minute. Okay, so by unanimous consent, we're having executive session at 9:00, 10:00.
Okay, and I will that we ask the superintendent to prepare communication to the bargaining units from the board. What do you understand?
No. It's sent out.
To be sent out.
Have the superintendent prepare a presentation for the bargaining units?
To prepare communication to the bargaining units from the board to be sent out.
Okay. I second. Barry second, is there any discussion? Any on all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. By unanimous with superintendent, you need to do that, sir? Done. Okay, I will entertain a motion to, so August 6th and August 20th, right, we're having two meetings. You're not turning to 20th or the 6th?
Uh, the 6th I'll be here.
Okay. Okay, anybody else not here for either one of those meetings?
Um, I'm heading to 6th.
And you're gonna try to get us the, the 20th, we'll shoot for the Ivy. Yeah, but the 6th will be the business stuff.
The 6th, we have the business stuff and I'll even take papers.
Bring them paper, yeah, and markers them.
Well, the 20th, are you gonna be here?
Yes.
The 20th?
20th is, no, don't worry, the 20th is Dover. 6th is here.
And it's preceded by the Dover school one day.
Okay.
Yes.
You're meeting 20th.
Right, the Dover.
Dover.
Right.
The Dover board is meeting.
But we're not meeting here.
Right.
No, it's the 20th on the Ivy?
No, the 20th is the River Valley School Board meeting. We'll set that agenda after the meeting on the 6th, if any of us are still alive. Okay, sit, Bill can mark it out.
I have a question for you again. What are your thoughts on, if this is too early, what are your intentions for the 20th meeting? Or are we gonna have that better defined as...
As the 6th.
Okay.
These meetings, it's the same thing, it's just a little stuff. Okay.
Did we adjourn?
Somebody made the motion. Barry second. Barry moved. Barry second, moved.
Oh, I think that was the last motion.
Yeah.
We had a motion, both of them.
Okay, Dwight made the motion to adjourn. We can go, buddy. You're all done.
Thank you, guys.